We'll call to order the City of Douglasville Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, May the 11th. We'll have our invocation by our own Community Outreach Coordinator, Ms. Emily Hardaway, and then the Pledge Allegiance will be led by Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Let's pray. Lord, thank you so much for this day that you've given us, God. I ask that you please be with us and be with our mayor and council as we discuss city business this evening. Please give them wisdom and discernment to lead our city. Thank you for all the blessings you've given us. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in the streets of the federal.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge. And Ms. Hardaway, we appreciate your thoughts and prayers to help us make decisions as we deliberate and do the business of the city. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the City of Douglasville. This is a meeting where official action will not be taken tonight. This is just for discussion to help us make our decision on Monday when we come back. This is just a work session. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the Agenda Item Comments from Citizens and Delegates section for you to discuss your business with us. I'll go over just a few protocol items, and then we will get into the body of the meeting. I'd like to make you aware of these things before we start. I ask that you would please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. If you deviate from that requirement the second time, the deviation, we will turn your microphone off so you won't have your discussion until you come back in line. Only one person speaking at a time, please. Please do not applaud or react to speakers or speak from the audience or cheer or carry on a conversation when you're at the microphone presenting to us. I remind you that we're only required to accept public comments during public hearings. And if you have any printed materials or anything like that, we ask that you would present those to our city clerk, Ms. Vicki Acker, to my right with the beautiful yellow jacket on. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, I ask that you would please put those in silent mode until the meeting is over, and the agenda items will be handled in the following manner. The committee chairperson will read the agenda item, then that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. Myself and council members will possibly ask clarifying questions to help us understand better to make our decision on next Monday. After that, the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There is a maximum of 20 minutes for those in favor of the item and 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes. If you'd like to speak to us, there are speaker cards that you should fill out. They're on the desk outside. Please fill those cards out and hand them to the city clerk again, Ms. Acker. When you come to the podium, hand your card to Ms. Acker. Give us your name and address for the record, and then you have five minutes to talk unless you're doing a presentation. You have 20 minutes. Each person has one opportunity to speak. This is not a question-and-answer or debate format. It's just here for us to get the information, deliberate, and make our decision next week. Again, if you have printed material, please hand that to our city clerk, and we will move on with the meeting. If you'd like to have a printed copy of the agenda, there are some copies outside on the desk before you enter the chamber, and/or you can follow us on the screen that's printed above me. So now we'll move on following the agenda. The next committee is Economic Development Committee, and that's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item this evening under the Economic Development Committee.
Yes, sir.
To authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs to continue the city's participation in the Georgia Classic Main Street Program. And our Main Street Manager, Ms. Shay Sterling, is here to enlighten us.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shay Sterling, Main Street Coordinator, address 6695 Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia, 30134. Annually, the city enters a memorandum of understanding with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs to continue the city's participation in the Georgia Classic Main Street Program. The recurring MOU allows the Douglasville Main Street Program to continue the use of the name and logo of the National Main Street America Organization. We do this yearly, and your continued support of the Main Street Program has been instrumental in continuing to provide downtown businesses with the support needed to thrive in our great city, as well as organizing successful, new, exciting, and inclusive programming events to encourage foot traffic in the downtown area. With your continued support, we will strengthen our local historic district as a popular tourist destination in Douglasville and foster a vibrant downtown community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sterling. Having cut my teeth in city government, on the downtown development authority many, 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 many years ago, I can attest to the lot of good that has come out of this program over the years and how it has definitely helped our Main Street here and our downtown. Any questions or comments from the mayor or council? Seeing none, I'm going to assume there's not too much controversy over this issue. I'd be happy to, with council's will, I'd like to place this on the consent agenda for Monday. So done.
Looks good.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we have under economic development tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you again for our -- you did a wonderful job yesterday at the Historic Preservation Commission luncheon, our Main Street Manager, so thank you for that. We'll move on then, Ms. Sterling. So we'll move on then to Finance Committee. The vice chair is Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have two items tonight. Item A is authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with FS Scarborough LLC for Hunter Park improvements, and we have Mr. Bass here to present.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of council, Chris Bass, 8830 Gurley Road, Parks Recreation Director. We are seeking approval to enter into a contract with FS Scarborough LLC for the purpose of site improvements at Hunter Park to upgrade the former train track that will now be turned into a walking trail. Just to bring you up to speed, if you remember, in 2019, we removed those old train tracks. At that point in time, we attempted to convert it to a walking trail ourselves in-house, but we ran into a few hiccups with WSA in terms of the stream and stormwater that comes through the park. So we decided to go into an agreement with the Southeast Civil Group for construction documents and site plan layout for the walking trail. We conducted a RFP back in February in which we received six bids for this particular project. Those bids were evaluated by four city staff that were based on previous experience, references, and the ability to meet our needs along with the project budget. The scope of work for this particular project includes some grading, storm drainage improvements, handrails along the backside of the walking trail, and new gravel natural surface that consists of 57 stones, similar to what we installed at Willing Workers Park when that renovation was conducted, the component that goes through the woods. Then also include some erosion and drainage control with the border of those being weather-treated wood to make sure that there are no drainage issues once we install that 57 stone. And with this contract that we are proposing, it will allow work to be completed within 90 days from the time of notice to proceed. So we are seeking approval to enter into that agreement with FS Scarborough, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about this project.
Anyone have any questions or remarks? Mr. Bass, who did you -- did you say where the funds for this would be coming from?
Yes, sir. This is taking out SPOSS 2022.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Does this mean we're getting our train back from Alabama?
No, sir.
We're not talking about the train!
Not this time.
Councilman Miller, you can shuffle your feet and go woo-woo. But that's as close to the train we're going to get. This would be a great addition to the park. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Sher. And my apologies if I missed this a moment ago, but will the park be available to the citizens during this construction period?
Yes, ma'am. So that's something that we talked about. During construction itself, the exterior, the trails that have actually been worked on will not be accessible. However, it's not accessible right now, so that's fine. But we will, they still will be able to access the main walking trail along the pond.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. If it would be all right with council, I'd like to place this on the consent agenda for Monday. All right. Item B, authorize the mayor to sign an agreement and an addendum to terms and conditions with Golf Now LLC for golf course booking and point-of-sale services. And Mr. Bass, and I know Mr. Carpenter, our PGA World Tour pro, is standing in the wings, ready to answer any questions. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. So as you mentioned, we are looking to update our point-of-sale system at West Pond, so I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Cartwright so he can address this item.
Before Mr. Cartwright starts, come on up. Come on to the microphone. Do you all mind, please, standing and giving him a hand? We are so proud of you. Tell us how -- well, we're just going to clap for you first, and then you tell us what you've done. He's so great.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Tell us where you've been and all of your travels. You're a great golf pro.
Make sure I check this box first. Chris Cartwright, 9090 Rose Avenue, West Pines Golf Club. So just got back from New Mexico, where I played in the National PGA Professional Championship, and finished tied for 34th out of 312 players there.
Woo! Congratulations.
Thank you. So as Mr. Bass mentioned, we're here to talk about a new point-of-sale system for the golf course. This is the same company that we use for our point-of-sale system now. They have just brought it to our attention that it will no longer be supported, I want to say after about June 30th. So they're wanting us to upgrade to this new point-of-sale system, and one of the big benefits for this one will be the credit card processing will be integrated into the system. So like when you go to Target and you check out, the credit card machine automatically populates the amount, and you put your card in, that will be the same way that this functions, whereas our old system, everything was separate and left the possibility for human error. So we're eliminating that possibility with this new system. They will provide us with all of the hardware that we need for this new system, with some new computers as well as iPads. So everything will be cloud-based with this software. So if our computers were to go down, we could check people in with an iPad in the pro shop or even out on the golf course if they were running late and needed to go straight to the first tee. We could do it out there.
It's my understanding that the credit card fees are budgeted for, so there's not going to be a fee for the patron at the point-of-sale.
Correct. Our credit card fees are included in the fees to play golf or hit range balls or buy the merchandise, and that will not change.
Okay.
The new credit card processing that is included with this agreement will actually save us a little bit of money, however. So it's a better rate than we're currently paying.
Okay. Good deal. Any questions for Mr. Cartwright? All right. Well, appreciate all that y'all do, but y'all having another record year, aren't you?
We are. We're about 10% ahead of last year's record year.
Wow, that's awesome.
So that's good to hear. Well, if it's all right with council, I'd like to place this on the consent agenda also. Thank you, Mr. Cartwright.
That's good.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Madam Mayor, that's all I had tonight under finance.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. We appreciate the report. It's nice to have something positive coming, and we congratulate Mr. Cartwright again. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Housing and Community Affairs Committee, chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under Housing and Community Affairs.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee, chaired by Councilmember Sam Davis.
Yes, I have one item. Madam Mayor, it's to authorize the mayor to sign an intergovernmental agreement between the Douglas County Board of Education and the City of Douglasville for the proposed establishing a shared parking agreement for Hunter Park during high school and Douglas County School District Arena. And Ms. Miranda, can you give me a few bits and pieces about the shared parking?
Absolutely. So this agreement was, is proposed between the city and the school board for the purposes of shared parking between events happening at Hunter Park and events happening at the graduation arena, which is being constructed adjacent to Hunter Park at the old school system building site. In addition, part of the agreement has added the ability for the city to use Douglas County High School's parking lot for downtown events as overflow parking, especially as we're getting ready to open the town green in a few months. So that will provide us some additional parking that could be provided with a shuttle if necessary.
Okay. Madam Mayor, any mayor and council? Council Watts?
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Ms. Jordan, one of the questions I had looking at this is, I guess there's always a possibility of two bookings getting on top of each other, something in the school system and something we have at the same time where they might conflict. And I saw where they had or we had 14 days to let them know of an event, the time and the day and all that. And I just wonder, you know, a lot of stuff gets scheduled ahead of time, big stuff that might use all that parking. I'm just wondering if we should not be notifying them so that we get on their calendar so they know we're going to need parking here, and we don't have a region tournament the same night where the parking lot's full over there at Douglas County High School, so on. You know, I may be worrying about a little thing here, but I just wonder about the booking of the people communicating with us and us with them, if we let them know or they let us know a little bit further out than 14 days, just so we get on their calendar or they get on our calendar when we know we've got it.
Yes, and we asked originally for 90 days. We got some pushback on that, but we added some language where the school system and the city agree that except for scheduled Douglas County School System events and scheduled city events at each of their own properties, that permission to use that parking facility of the other would not be unreasonably withheld. But there will probably come a time, yes, where there are conflicting times. This is more just allowing that license for use rather than taking a right to the usage, if that makes sense. So in a certain respect, hopefully it will be very helpful to us, and hopefully we will have good, open communication there. But unfortunately, we kind of disagreed on how much notice would be given.
Yeah.
And now the council.
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman Davis. Just looking at the agreement, when there is just a large amount of parking, do we have -- I don't see anything in here how we'll control traffic. Maybe that's not the agreement, and maybe that doesn't need to be here, or is it somewhere else? But Ms. Jackson, can you?
So this just controls the parking aspect of it. Each entity will have to have proper traffic channels in place to ensure for the event, much like if we do the amphitheater, we have to ensure that we have either shuttles to get individuals there to prevent the traffic from going into one single flow. So this is just to establish the parking, so we can use the parking of theirs.
So once you do that, you said there will be an agreement of how you're going to address specifically. I mean, I hear you're saying that whether it be the school system, but the language is not in here. Is that something that's going to be separate?
So it's for every event that you have, so I keep going back to the amphitheater, but you have to have a traffic plan.
Right.
So it won't be an agreement, but the school system will have to have a traffic plan as it relates to arena items, and then we have a traffic plan as well as it relates to the amphitheater, and it has to be approved. So in those meetings and in that traffic plan, order for it to be signed off has to be signed off by Douglas County EMS, Fire, as well as Douglasville Police Department, Shares Office. They're all acting in that EOC, and so everyone has to sign off on it to ensure it's a proper traffic plan in place.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
And additionally, the agreement does address that the school system shall provide security at Hunter Park when there is a school system event that is using Hunter Park for its parking and vice versa, that the city would require, would be required to provide security at the parking for school system properties.
So can you tell me which, what number is that under? I'm sorry.
Those are under 1 and 2, respectively.
All right. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. Just to add to the conversation from the question that Councilman Watts asked, and then it's a sidebar but not directly with Councilmember Dr. Burdanley, I've spoken with the superintendent, and he reminded me that the arena is going to have separate parking, so it isn't just the parking that is there now, but when they complete their arena, it's going to be staged and more availability for parking. And the city manager's office and the engineering department, Mr. Thompson, they did not include, when our assistant city manager talked to us about, this is just overflow parking, when she talked to us about Hunter Park, the parking deck, they did not include, which Mr. Thompson said there's overflow parking in the downtown area for the end of Church Street, when you first come off of Highway 92 in Fairburn, there's parking, a parking area there on the corner of Campbellton and Church Street. Regions Bank said we can park there, the Chamber. So there are other ancillary parking places that the shuttle will go all around the city to have people park. So even the post office, we said something to the post office. So just all around the amphitheater in the downtown area will be other parking available that they did not include in that count that will help us if we have overflow or if we have a conflict. Hopefully, we'll not have a conflict in scheduling, but there are other parking areas as well in the city, in the downtown area.
Right. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for mentioning the Coliseum will have their parking, so that helps. Thank you so much. No, I don't have any other questions.
Miranda, do you know the capacity of the arena?
Unfortunately, we won't be able to determine that in full until the completion. But my understanding is they have provided ample parking on-site for their events. Hunter Park is intended to be an overflow lot.
And they also will be a concert venue also, so they will be having major concerts, so.
And then Douglas County High School, and they've built more parking behind Douglas County High School with the new stadium, the new football stadium.
If possible, we had to go to the mall.
True.
Okay. I'd like to put this on the consent agenda for Monday.
Looks good, Councilman Davis.
All right. Moving right along, and that's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. We appreciate the report as well as Attorney Miranda and our assistant city manager. The next committee is Personnel and Organization Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Personnel and Organization.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then to the next committee, and I'll ask the vice chair, Councilmember Dr. Burdanley, to take Planning and Development Committee, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
If I may, I would like to start with item C first, and that reads as follows. Consider a request for plat approval for Tributary Partial B, Section 1B, for the purpose of amending the reference deed book page numbers and partials for 30.274 acres at Tributary at New Manchester, Land Lot 155, District 1, Section 5, Partial B. Section 1B, application by Steve Ostaber. Ms. Jackson.
Good evening. Marissa Jackson, Planning and Zoning Administrator, 6701 Church Street. This item is a revised final plat for the Tributary subdivision. The homes are already built. The old plat has some clerical errors on it. The official lot numbers, deed book page number, are updated on this one to correct those clerical errors. Staff has reviewed the request and finds that it meets the city's standards for approval.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. So this is just cleaning up this item. Do we have any questions from our mayor or council? Okay. If not, I will start with A again. Thank you. All right. So item A is hold a public hearing and consider a request for a change in zoning from PSP, Public Semi-Public District, to CBD, Central Business District, for .81 acres located on 8458 Campbellton Street in Land Lot 16, District 1, Section 5, Partial 0016015D080, application by the City of Douglasville. Ms. Jackson.
Yes, ma'am. So as you recall, this is a city-initiated rezoning. This site is at the intersection of Spring Street. Yeah, this is the, it's at the intersection of Spring Street and Campbellton Street. As you can see, it's currently zoned PSP, which stands for Public Semi-Public. The Public Semi-Public zoning designation is reserved for institutional uses. This site actually, though, is currently privately owned, so staff is proposing a rezoning to Central Business District. As you can see, Central Business District is surrounding, it's appropriate for the site, and it's in compliance with the Regional Activity Center Future Land Use Plan. You should note that last month, there was a Historic Preservation Commission meeting. The applicant is proposing some exterior renovations. Those have been approved and reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission. Earlier this month, there was a planning commission hearing, and planning commission recommended approval of this item.
Okay. Thank you so much. So at this time, I'd like to open the floor for a public hearing. Those that may be in favor of this item. Are there any individuals in our audience that are opposed to this item? Do we have any questions from our mayor or council? I'm sorry, I'd like to close the public hearing. Do we have any questions from our mayor or council? Okay. If not, we will go on to item B. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a variance from Section 3.07B of the Unified Development Ordinance to increase the maximum principal building height to 45 feet on 109 acres of Riverside Parkway in Land Lot 171, District 1, Section 5, Partial 0171015001, application by Dillard Sellers, care of Julie Sellers. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. So the applicant has requested a variance. This is currently zoned PRD, which stands for Planned Residential Development, and is generally used for multifamily developments and apartments. The maximum height is 35 feet, and the applicant is requesting a variance to increase the maximum height to 45 feet. There are some other multifamily developments in the vicinity. Those are zoned PUD, which stands for Planned Unit Development, and the additional height on those was approved as part of the entitlement process. Here's the site plan. And on this item, per the Unified Development Ordinance, the maximum height in PRD is 35 feet, and allowing the additional height would not be in compliance with the Unified Development Ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. So there, you mentioned that there are, in that area, other heights that are at that level, so this would not be the first, correct?
This would be the first in the planned residential district. The other ones have a different zoning district.
Okay. All right. So I would like to open the floor for a public hearing. For those that may be in favor of this item, please come forward. If you have filled out a card, please give it to our assistant city manager, the clerk to my right. Come to the podium, state your name and your address, please, for the record. It's the applicant. It's applicant. Hi.
Good evening. Mayor and city council members, Julie Sellers. I am trying to find my speaker card.
Take your time.
Sorry.
Thank you so much.
I have a presentation. Do I just click? Okay, great. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Councilmember. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members, Julie Sellers, seventeen seventy-six Peachtree Street in Atlanta, Georgia, here on behalf of the applicant. Have a brief presentation. Hopefully this development is familiar with you. In March of twenty twenty-two, this application, in fact, the same slides that I'm showing you tonight, were also before you for the zoning, to allow for this multifamily development. Just to reorient you, as you may recall, this is the property that's located in between Sweetwater Creek and the Kihei and McMaster Carr facilities on Riverside Parkway. There's a lot of challenges with this site, and in this site plan, again, this is a site plan. Sorry, I've got some transitions in here that I didn't realize. Just to refresh your memory, this is the site plan that you all saw during the zoning phase last year. You may recall that the overall property is a hundred and nine acres. The back, I'm gonna call it the back acres, the fifty-one acres, and then the front fifty-eight acres is what we were using for the development site. A couple of things to note. You may remember that this, there was a lot of discussion on security cameras, slot cameras. That was really sort of the focus. And a couple of points that I want to just clarify for council tonight is the site constraints. We have a creek, we have buffers, we have wetlands, and we have flood plains. So this has been a site that definitely has a lot of issues that hamper the ability to develop. And so on March twenty-first, this is just a portion of the ordinance that the council adopted. It adopted the P R D site plan. And I think a couple of things that I wanted to mention, on that P R D site plan, the fifty-foot height was referenced on that plan. I will certainly tell you that, you know, we talked about the variance, the letter of intent included the variance. We all left here thinking that the variance had in fact been included and approved. My clients purchased the property, and then, once they finalized all their engineering, went in for the development plan, this is when this height issue was raised. But I just want to reiterate, the plans that you see are the exact plans that this council approved. This is not increasing density at all. The density allowed was ten units an acre. We are not trying to do anything other than what we showed you previously. And this variance would be required to allow for the three-four building splits that were shown on the approved site plan that was adopted. This, again, is just another plan, another copy of that plan that was included as part of your ordinance. And I've enlarged parts so that you can see the Phase One. This Phase One from the zoning site plan, as you can see, the buildings are laid out, and they say three-four splits. Phase One was two hundred and forty-seven units. The plan that we have submitted as the development plan actually has two hundred and forty-five units. So we're actually going down in density, and I hope that it's pretty easy to see the buildings are in the same location, it's the same three-four split. Just going ahead and asking for the council's approval to confirm the height that is needed to be able to develop this property as intended with the zoning. This is just showing you the elevations. The development plan is on the council's agenda tonight under Section E of this section, so you'll, you'll hear more of the details there. But I did want to just go ahead and show the three-four split. This is just kind of a enlarged part to show the portion of the buildings that would have the three-floor configuration. And as you can see, that is measuring at thirty-one feet. And then the portion that would have the three floors plus the basement, or to the common person, to my eye, it looks like a four-story building. And so, you know, you can see there are four living units there. The reason for this, and I'm sure Councilman Miller probably is much more well-versed than I am in this, is it's allowing us to work with the topography of the property here. Again, this is a variance request to increase the height from the thirty-five feet to allow for the three-four building split. And the maximum height, if that were imposed on this development, would not allow us to develop in accordance to the site plan. This community, as we discussed during the zoning, it is a high-quality living community. We have nine-foot ceilings, and we can't have nine-foot ceilings if we're constrained with that thirty-five-foot height. If we were required to have the thirty-five-foot height, that would mean a loss of seventy-three units. Again, we are substantially under our density. We are not trying to do more. We're actually doing less, significantly less than what is authorized. I did want to just touch on a couple of the multifamily communities along Riverside Parkway. We have Sweetwater Vista that was back in two thousand nineteen, the council adopted in ordinance. As we know, the tributary area had the D C D that is, you know, about as clear as mud at times, but that did allow for five stories and fifty feet. Emblem was the next one, that was in twenty twenty. That had a P R D, and in the ordinance itself, it did specify three-four building splits. And then most recently is the Resia or A H S, as you may recall, at Tributary Village. That had that same D C D, P U D zoning that does allow that fifty feet in height. And so this is certainly in line with the development along Riverside Parkway, certainly not out of character. And I did want to just mention a couple of things as it relates. And some of the factors that were included under Section twelve point oh eight B, as far as whether the property would yield a reasonable return or a beneficial use without the variance, this property would not be financially feasible if our density is cut and we lose those seventy-three units. It's not as simple as just lopping off a floor and making the numbers work. We also could not comply with the zoning site plan if we did not have this height to allow for the three-four building split. Again, looking at the purpose of the U D O, certainly there are regulations in place, but there are, there is a process for seeking, whether it's called, as it was in some of these other zonings, special stipulations, or here where it's a technical variance, but we do believe that this is absolutely in compliance with the vision of the code, which is quality housing. That is what we are trying to provide here, and we would certainly not be increasing the density by the approval of this, nor would it have any difference on the sightline or the aesthetic appearance within the city. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have, and we respectfully ask for your approval of the height variance to allow this development to move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Sellers. I, I need to make a correction. Before Ms. Sellers came, I said I would open the floor for a hearing. This is not a hearing that Ms. Sellers just stated. I put the horse before the cart, so I apologize. So I will now. Thank you so much for your thoroughness. I will yield and allow our mayor and council, if they have any questions at this time. Yes, Councilman Estes.
Thank you, Ms. Sellers. A couple of things. I, I do remember very well when this came before us over a year ago, and, and, and I agree, it was, it was presented with, with these heights and, and this plan. Can you remind me what the density was that was approved?
Yes.
In that zoning?
The density approved in the zoning is ten units an acre.
And what are you, what is this now going to?
This is, so the ten units an acre over the whole hundred and nine acres would be like a thousand units. And that's nowhere close to what we are proposing. We had on I have to get my readers out these days. We had Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One had two hundred and forty-seven units. That's what you see right here. We are requesting two hundred and forty-five. So we're actually two units less. And then on Phase Two, let me see if I can read the fine print. And Phase Two is not part of the development plan that we're here for tonight. It's just Phase One. Thank you. A hundred and ninety-five units on Phase Two. So we're significantly less than.
You're less than half of the density that was approved, even, even with Phase Two included.
Correct.
Okay. One other question. I, I know in this application for variance, it's asking for a maximum height of forty-five feet. You mentioned fifty, and I've heard fifty elsewhere. Is there a what's the difference there?
Thank you. That's a great question. In the zoning site plan and in the letter of intent for the zoning, we were referencing fifty. With this variance, when we went back and looked at how the city's code calculates the height, you know, every city does it differently, and so the architects, when, when they really went to, you know, fine tune, looking at Douglasville's code, forty-five feet works for us. And so we wanted to make sure.
Is correct.
Correct, yes.
So you're asking for a variance basically of ten feet?
That is correct, yes, sir.
All right, that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. Do we have any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Sellers. At this time, I will open the floor for a hearing. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to speak for this item, please come forward. Right, if we have anyone in the audience who would like to speak against this item, please come forward. Thank you. If not, I would like to close the floor for this public hearing at this time. Thank you so much. We'll move forward to the next item. Item D, consider a request for plat approval for the purpose of combining for seven point zero one acres at Plaza ninety-two Drive and Lot, Land Lot fifty-three, District One, Section Five, Parshall zero zero five three zero one five zero zero eight six zero zero five three zero one five zero zero three two and zero zero five three zero one five zero zero eight nine. Application by B T Storage LLC, care of Sean Gleason, Ms. Jackson.
Good evening again. So this is a request for a combination plat. There are three parcels that are being combined to facilitate the development of a self-storage facility. Again, staff has reviewed the request and finds that it meets the standards for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Do we have any questions or comments from our mayor council?
Could you explain where this is? Plaza ninety-two Drive, where is that?
So do you know where Martins is on Fairburn? It's behind the Martins. Yeah, it's like the side street.
It's over right in between the, the, the olos that used to be that street right there. Does that make sense? Did that answer your question, Mayor Protim?
Not entirely. I'm still trying to. I'll figure, I'll get it, I'll figure it out.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman, Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you. Is this the same property that we looked at just recently, or is this a separate project?
Yes, ma'am. It was recently rezoned. There was one par, there was one parcel that was general commercial and two parcels that were light industrial. They were recently rezoned so that all three are general commercial to facilitate the requested development.
That makes sense. Thank you for the refresher.
Right, so it's just combining all, all of the parcels instead of being separate. Is that correct, Ms. Jackson? Mayor Protim, are you still looking?
I think it would have been helpful to have a site map that just shows a little wider area, just to, to get a better perspective. And there's a tiny little map here, but it doesn't really help much.
So Mayor Protim, if you would like, if we get out in time, I'll be glad to travel down there and show you.
I'll make the time for that.
Do you have any other, any other questions? Okay, if not, our last item, E, consider a request for development plan approval for the Heeren Mill Multifamily Development for fifty-eight point zero four acres on Riverside Parkway in Land Lot one seventy-one, District One, Section Five, Partial zero one seven one zero one five zero zero one for plans dated January twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. Application by Delagrissey? Excuse me if I pronounced that incorrectly, Consulting Engineering Incorporated, Mr. Thompson.
Marcus Thompson, City Engineer, sixty-seven zero one Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia, three zero one three four. So as previously mentioned, this item correlates with the variance request in item B. Just to add to Ms. Sellers' excellent presentation, the project involves the construction of a four-story apartment complex with a total of two hundred and forty-five units. The site plan indicates access to the development off, from Riverside Parkway. A total of four hundred and ninety-one on-street parking spaces are proposed. Amenities include a community clubhouse with a pool, fitness center, dog park, pedestrian walking trails, which will connect to Sweetwater Creek. Also, slot safety cameras near all access points and camera systems on all buildings, and fully angled for each parking lot. The proposed materials are fifty-two point seven percent fiber-seamment brick, twenty percent masonry, nineteen, nineteen point eight percent finestration, which includes windows, doors, and openings, and seven point five percent metal panels. Have attached the application, site plan, building elevations with the material percentage table shown attached to this agenda item. City staff has reviewed the application and attachments and recommends approval with the following condition, that the city council, with city council's approval of the variance to increase the building heights from thirty-five to forty-five feet. And excuse, there is an error in my memo. I will get that. My apologies. And the applicant is present to answer any questions, additional questions or concerns you guys may have.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Are there any questions or comments from our mayor and council?
So that
Mayor Protim?
That error will get cleared up before Monday, right?
Yes, the, the language will, that error will be cleared up.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you can look at that. Yes, Mayor Protim?
I did have a quick design question, because you, you show the three-story, not, you, the developer shows the three-story and the four-story options, but they don't show what they're calling a three-four split. How is that gonna look? I don't understand. There's no, you don't have any drawing showing how, if that's gonna just stop at one point, or is it split between front and back, side to side? How is that?
Good question.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Emmanuel Dougarakis. I'm the civil engineer for the project. I'll do my best to answer your question. The three-four split, there's, there's four buildings. Do we have a site plan that we can?
We have it.
Okay, if you're looking at the site plan, Building One is a U-shaped building. So the three-story side of that building will be the outer side of the U. The four-story side will be the inside where the courtyard is, overlooking the pool area and the amenity. Then the three bar-shaped buildings, I'll call them, which is Building two thousand, three thousand, and four thousand. So on those, you have a central drive with angled parking. So Building two thousand and three thousand, the three-story side will face that angled parking. The four-story side will face the, the out, outer perimeter of the site.
So how's the building gonna look, though? You're gonna have three stories, you have sloped roofs on, on these, so the roof is gonna come up and hit the side of the forest, or are the people on the four-story side gonna have a patio out?
Yeah, the four-story side will be a terrace level. It'll have ground level. We call it a terrace level, and then Level One will be.
I'm just trying to picture the profile of that.
Okay, roof line is the same. You have three going down and four going down, and there will be a split wall.
So you'll see, so they'll have windows on that side of the building?
Yes, yes.
You didn't show any.
Does the elevation not?
It doesn't show that on the elevation, though. Sorry?
It's shown on Page Six of the attachment.
Page Six?
Page Six? There's, there's, there's an elevation, but it doesn't show.
The split.
It doesn't show the split.
Decide where the split is, yeah.
Yeah, that's a four-story building and a three-story building.
I'm sorry, did I answer your question?
I think so, yeah. It would have been nice to see what that looked like, that's all. Thank you.
So is there a possibility before Monday that we could get what it looks like, the split, what it will look like?
We have full building elevations on all four sides of all the buildings now, so I don't see a problem with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
That'd be handy.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much. All right, thank you, Mr. Thompson. Madam Mayor, we have no other items under our planning and development.
I apologize.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Councilman Watts, please excuse me, I'm sorry.
I just, looking at the two elevations, are some of them, do some of them have patios? Are those patios I see, or is not all of them have patios, or all of them do? I was just curious about that.
Good question.
All the apartments.
I cannot say with certainty that all of the apartments have patios, but I believe most of them do.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Make sure I'm looking both ways.
I would just reiterate that it would be nice to see a rendering of the three-four. Prior to Monday, that would be great. Thank you.
I don't know if there'll be color renderings.
That's okay. We have crayons.
We want to see a fly-through.
He's smiling.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Thank you so much. Madam Mayor, we do not have any other items under planning and development.
Thank you so much, Madam Vice Chair. You've done an exceptional job, like you do this every time. So thank you for taking that committee for us. And thank you, Mr. Thompson, Ms. Jackson, and the applicant for coming forward. Councilmember Watts, I drove through the stop sign and didn't stop at Personnel and Organization Committee. Do you have anything this evening?
Madam Mayor, no, we have no business tonight.
All right, thank you so much. We'll move on then to item number eleven, Public Improvement and Beautification Committee, and that is chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee, chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes. Do you have any business?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No business this evening.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then to item number thirteen, which is Public Safety Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have a couple items. I'm going to start with item A. And it was tabled for May first, twenty-twenty-three, amended Section Ten dash eighteen of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Douglasville for the purpose of exempting tasting rooms and tap rooms, brew pubs, and other licensed pouring locations within the city of Douglasville, Central Business District, and to change the zoning classification reference in subsection Ten dash eighteen dash four from C N N to the updated zoning classification in C Neighborhood Commercial. I'd like to make a motion to remove it from the table, Madam Mayor.
We don't have to vote this evening. We're just hearing information, Councilman.
We don't have to?
Not tonight.
Okay, well-
But that's good, you're thinking ahead.
At this time, removing from the table, like, take no action at this time for the item Ten dash eighteen. Miranda, you want to?
Well, I think we had some changes to what their questions were from last week. So if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, can we hear what the staff has to report for us on the item?
An update.
Just an update on it? Because we had questions about CBD district and entertainment and all of that. Thank you so much. We appreciate that. So I'm not certain if Ms. Jordan or Assistant City Manager is going to report to us.
Ms. Jordan.
Okay, yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Councilwoman Davis. So this item, we are going to be asking Monday that this item be removed from the table and no action be taken on this item so that we can present council with an amended item that will reflect more clearly the intent of council and the questions that were brought forth at the last round of council meetings. This item will tie into our item later in the evening, which is Staff Report, Item B. So hopefully that will give us an opportunity to answer any questions about how we're going to be addressing this amendment to Ten dash eighteen A.
Okay, Madam Mayor, is okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I appreciate you letting her clarify for that for us.
Thank you. At this time, won't take no action.
Okay.
Okay, moving right along on item B. Hold a public hearing to consider requests for change in agent outlet manager and a transfer of alcoholic beverage license for the retail pack of selling wine and malt beverage at the following location. Current licensee merchant venue LLC, DBA Hospital Drive Food Mark. Proposed license, License Zero Six Oh Three Six INC., DBA Faber Road, Faber Food Mark, Location Six Zero Three Six Faber Road. Current agent outlet manager, Amin Merchant. Proposed agent outlet manager, Laleen Kojabah. I hope I didn't miss pronouncing your name. The required fees have been paid into the finance department. Will the applicant please come down and state your name and address for our record, please?
So my name is Laleen Kojabah. And address is, you want the store address, right?
Yes.
It's Six Zero Three Six Fairburn Road, Douglasville, Georgia, three zero one, three four.
Yes, ma'am, and this is renewal and changing the agent outlet. Will you be the agent outlet manager?
I'll be, I am owner of the corporation.
Okay, and you will be training?
Yeah, the manager of, yeah, there, will be working there like sometimes. And we have a different manager as well.
And yes, ma'am, and how would you go about training your employees for tobacco and alcohol?
Yes.
Do you have a system in place?
We have, like, my husband is usually, works on the stores. So he'll be the responsible person who's going to go give them the training, training to the employees about the alcohol. And we have the whole, that, whole form for the, from the city, the guardians. We have, what do you call it?
Yes, state your name and address for the records, okay?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Mayor, and respected council members. My name is Pusha Jhar. I'll be assisting her in the beginning, the, you know, store operation. And, yeah, we have a process in place. We do train our staff members to check for the valid government-issued photo IDs for every single alcohol sale and tobacco sale.
So where, which one of y'all be agent outlet manager? Do you have one, or?
No, sir. She will be the one. I'm just going to be assisting her in person for the first few days because I have experience doing this for the last few years. So I will be there with her initially, as soon as she's fully trained, and, you know, then she can take over from there.
Okay, very good. Okay, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much, you all as well, for coming in. And this is a renewal? Is it a renewal for license? Okay, and you're changing the outlet manager?
Change of ownership, yes.
And how much experience have you had? I know you said you've had some experience.
Four years.
Four years, okay. Thank you so much. Have we had any infractions, Police Department? Do you know?
None that I'm aware of.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I appreciate you answering the questions. You still, you still have to be still in hot seat until someone else asks some questions.
Any other, any other council members? If not, we're going to have to have a, have to hold a public hearing. And it would be for five minutes for those who speak. For your license.
Yes, sir.
In five minutes to speak against. And at this time, we open up the floor for the public hearing to speak for. And the clock is ticking?
Thank you.
So since we see no takers, five minutes to speak against. The clock is ticking. Okay, Madam Mayor, we're going to close this public hearing. If you come back up to the mic. And if you will, come back on Monday. And we'll give you a decision. And if you will, both of you all come back, okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. We'll move on then to the next committee, Recreation, Culture, and Tourism, chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items tonight.
Yes, sir.
Item A is to adopt a resolution declaring May seventh through the thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, as National Travel and Tourism Week in the city of Douglasville. And Ms. Jackson will handle this.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Watts. As you all know, National Travel and Tourism Week is an annual tradition set forth in US travel, in the travel community, for travel essentials for guests visiting neighborhoods and communities as relates to economic growth, cultivating vibrant communities, and creating quality job opportunities. This week, that we're currently in, May seventh through the thirteenth, is National Travel and Tourism Week. It's the fortieth anniversary that the US has celebrated this week. Currently, this week, the city is holding pop-ins at the Welcome Center. So you receive free popcorn when you go to or pop in at the Welcome Center up until Friday at 5:00 PM, or tomorrow at 5:00 PM. Also, we have several pushes on our social media to let individuals know if they would like to visit the city of Douglasville and what travel and tourism actually means, and how it assists with economic growth in a community. As well as yesterday, we did have HPC Awards Luncheon, and we provided tourism awards to Dream and Suites for Partner of the Year, as well as Painting with a Twist as the Spirit Award. Tonight, of course, is the resolution for city councils to approve. And then tomorrow, we'll be passing out hotel drop-ins as it relates to swag for the city of Douglasville to provide for traveling, or visitors that'll be traveling at those hotels. So they'll receive swag when they check into the hotel from the city of Douglasville as well.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Any questions or comments? Mayor and Council? Yes, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank staff as well for having us have an opportunity to participate in the fortieth anniversary for National Tourism Week, and for Kumba Coffee for earlier this week, having me come in and talk to about fifteen small business owners about tourism. It was a great conversation. We were supposed to be there for an hour. We were there for two and a half hours, talking to women with small businesses and tourism in the community. And we have a few that were going to be coming to see Ms. Shayla Reed, our community development director, about starting those businesses. So we appreciate the opportunity for the community to come together. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a, out of curiosity, question here. Is there any way, or has there ever been an attempt to determine what tourism brings as far as revenue to the, to the city?
Yes, so we do have that information. Just a random fact, on average, if we didn't have a tourism department or we didn't accept the hotel motel tax, it actually saves each resident about $400 because you have to add that to their property taxes if we didn't accept the hotel motel tax and that revenue from visitors. But we do have the actual amount that we receive, and I can have staff send that out to you all, so you know how much you're actually saving by receiving those funds and the revenue from tourists that come to the city of Douglasville.
I just, I just would love for the citizens to know that and understand. And policies and things that we're putting in place, things that we're doing as a city, with the amphitheater and the parks and rec improvements, those all add to, to the benefits that tourism brings. So I just think that's good information for citizens to kind of chew on a little bit and understand. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Jackson. Item B, authorize the mayor to sign the twenty-twenty-three service contract between the city of Douglasville and the Cultural Arts Council, Douglasville Douglas County, Inc., for cultural arts services and cultural arts master plan. Ms. Jackson?
Yes, thank you again, Councilman Watts. This, this contract is for or between the city of Douglasville, as well as the Cultural Arts Council. As you all know, it's a routine contract. Last year, we did supply the Cultural Arts Council with $75,000. This year, in the amount of $100,000, $75,000 will go towards those cultural arts services they provide. And then $25,000 will go towards a cultural arts master plan that you all discussed with Ms. Lightner when she was, before council, discussing what all they would be bringing to the table this year.
Any comments or questions? Yes, Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much. I know I'm a chatterbox tonight, but I'm excited about this contract and us increasing the resources for the Cultural Arts Council. As we have seen exhibited without, throughout the city, we can see tangible things that they're doing to include, be inclusive of everyone. And Councilmember Dr. Burdanley mentioned the hearts in the city that are being painted all over the city that really want people, the citizens, to know that we are, have a city of civility as we just received that designation, and that we care about the community. So it's exciting to see public art really coming to fruition, that people can see the beautification that CAC brings in addition to what we're planning with this arts master plan. So it's exciting. It's exciting to see when you walk in the parks, seeing art when you're walking down in O'Neill Plaza, and just all over the hearts and fire hydrants and all of that stuff that is popping up. So thank you so much. Murals, we're excited about all of that.
Councilman Estes?
Yeah, I would just like to point out that arts drive tourism, just feeding into your last question about additional revenue to the city based on tourism. Arts is a primary driver of tourism. So this is a vital service that the CAC provides for us.
And the services that they're providing are in the city and the county. And, well, I won't go there. But I just was kind of noticing a few things as I looked through that. But is there any other comments or questions? Yes, Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Ms. J- Just to clarify, Assistant City Manager, you said $25,000, you meant $50,000?
Yes, sir, I was raising my hand to clarify for the viewing audience. I did say $25,000. That was a mistake. It is $50,000 for the cultural arts master plan, and $70,000 for them to provide cultural arts services. Thank you, Mayor Protim.
Thank you. That's all. Mr. Chair?
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'm going to ask these, both these items, under Recreation, Culture, and Tourism be placed on the consent agenda for Monday? And with that, Madam Mayor, that's all we have tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the report for Recreation, Culture, and Tourism. We'll move on to the next committee, which is Technology Committee. That's chaired by Mayor Protim, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is absolutely no business under the Technology Committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. Technology keeps us moving on behind the scenes. Sixteen, item number sixteen, Transportation Committee, chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items tonight. The first item reads as follows. Authorize the mayor to sign a maintenance agreement with the George Department of Transportation for the I-20 Fairburn Road Gateway Sign. Mr. Thompson?
What?
Marcus Thompson, City Engineer, Sixty-seven Zero One Church Street. So the last part of the gateway signage construction project is for us to install the lighting. Just want to provide a brief update. Our Henry has, if you guys ride by now, our Henry has installed the lighting rack with the lights inside. So the last piece is just to tap into the high-mass system, which is owned by GDOT. So with, with that being the case, we had to basically revise our current encroachment permit. And along with that comes with the mowing and maintenance agreement that we have to fill out, which ensures to GDOT that we have a maintenance work plan that we're taking care of the vegetation surrounding the sign. We're providing maintenance in regards to the electrical infrastructure and that we're cleaning the sign every so often. So are there any questions or concerns?
Thank you. This is exciting.
I know.
Yay.
Turning the lights on.
When will the switch actually be flipped?
Air Protim.
As soon as we can get this mowing and maintenance agreement and our permit revised, GDOT's blessing.
We're talking weeks, months?
Yeah, I'd say probably a month.
Too sure about that.
Hopefully sooner than that.
Oh, look at, look at Mr. Thompson. I love that smile.
I know. He's been working very hard.
Yes. Any other questions, Madam Mayor? Yes, ma'am.
Not a question, just a comment. I wanted to personally and publicly thank you, Mr. Thompson, for allowing me to do like the little pinches, like my grandmother used to pinch me real hard. So thank you for allowing me to, and the council, to really ask you to get, you know, this ball rolling. I know it's been a lot of bureaucracy and trying to get the agreement together and liability issues with insurance and all of that with our legal staff. And so I really appreciate, and on behalf of the council, we appreciate your diligence in getting this done and trying to get this, the lights on for the sign. We appreciate you. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Wonderful. Yes.
Madam Mayor, maybe we should do like a lighting ceremony, like the Christmas tree Rockefeller Center. We should flip the switch- Madam Mayor, maybe we should do like a lighting ceremony, like, like the Christmas tree in Rockefeller Center, where we should flip the switch on when it's off.
Let's do it. That sounds great.
All right, Marcus, Mr. Thompson, I see that smile too. That's like gray. He's excited. All right, so definitely, do I have any opposition to consent agenda?
No.
I'd like to put this on the consent agenda, please. All right, the second item, authorize the mayor to sign the Right-Away Mowing and Maintenance Agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation, permit ID number A097008859-7, for the purpose of the city performing mowing at the Right-Away adjacent at Jesse Davis Park. Mr. Thompson?
So this item is similar to the previous item that we discussed. So basically, there will be a second access point for the new Jesse Davis Park Improvements Project, which is located, which is located off of Malone Street, but it'll wrap around near the Douglasville Village Apartments to, for anybody that's coming off of State Route 92 that, that's turning into Brown Street, that intersects, that traffic light near Brown Street to access the site. So in order for us to basically install that driveway, we need GDOT's driveway perm, driveway approval from GDOT, because our driveway apron is within the Right-Away of GDOT. So this maintenance, maintenance and mowing agreement is basically similar to the, like I said, item A, basically ensuring to GDOT that, hey, we will be maintaining the lawn and everything else in regards to that driveway apron.
Okay, that's, that's exciting. The residents will be really excited to hear that there'll be another, since that other drive was cut off. Will there be, when will we have a chance to see what that will look like?
So it's actually shown on...
The driveway?
Yeah, it's shown on page nine. If you look, let's see. It's a bad drawing. If you can see where that cul-de-sac is at, then there's a park at aisle below that, and then you can see that driveway that connects to that aisle that's below the cul-de-sac area.
That's really great.
Yeah.
That's real good. They'll be able to access that. Are there any questions or comments, Madam Mayor? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Again, not to reiterate everything that I've said about Mr. Thompson, but we do appreciate this, and this goes into the question that you sent to me, Dr. Burdanley, and Councilwoman Davis on behalf of New Horizons Community, and the project that said it was 95% complete. So this is part of that 5%, which is really that maintenance piece for the Highway 92 relocation project. I did drive through the area on Saturday, and I've received some questions, even when I talked to Mr. Denard on Monday. So a lot of the maintenance where the barrels and grass, and Assistant City Manager and I were talking, is beyond the Douglasville city portion. So that stops at Cave Springs and Maruni Mill. So up near Brownsville and going into Paulding is Phase Two. So our portion, we still have that 5%. This is part of the 5% that's going to be done, and it's mainly maintenance. And they have a schedule to come and cut the grass and do all those things. So hopefully, we'll get this last 5% completed soon. But this, this is part of GDOT's plan.
Wonderful. You said they have a schedule. I'd like to see that schedule.
City manager, this is the city manager told me about the schedule.
You have a schedule? I've never seen one. That'd be great to have one.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can try to see what I can.
Okay, good. All right.
Because Mr. Roberts goes out there to cut, which he shouldn't have to do, but they're, they just, they're on a schedule. They don't come when it rains or...
Right, and I know that with our staffing right now, it's been very challenging. All right. Do we have any other questions or comments? All right, if not, I would like to put this on the consent agenda as well. All right, no other items, Madam Mayor, and Transportation?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. We appreciate the positive, exciting report that you presented to us. Under Other Business, the elected officials' report concerning the Douglas County Chamber of Commerce's strategic leadership visit to Durham, North Carolina. Are you going to give that to us? Assistant City Manager?
Madam Mayor, I was going to ask, would it be okay if we postponed this until Councilman Adams is back? Because I know he wanted to hear about the trip as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Would that be okay?
Sure, we can, is, is it Monday? Or I'm not certain his vacation schedule. We'll look and see. And when we're, when he returns, we'll make certain that we give that report.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Any other business from council members? Thank you. I did have one thing. It's Ms. Megan Daniel, of course, is one of the finalists. She's in the top five now. She's from Douglas County High School, one of my daughter Anna's classmates. She was on The Voice, and now she's on American Idol. She's top five in this Sunday. She has an opportunity after performing to be one of the top three. And so we're just asking if you are an American Idol fan, or if you would like to support her. The text number for the contestant, her name is Megan Daniels, and she's number 21, and you can vote up to 10 times. So we would like to support our own from the Douglasville area.
So you can vote early and vote often in this case?
Yes, sir.
I used up all of my 10 Sunday.
I know. So American Idol is Sunday at 8:00 P.M. And again, that, but the information is placed on all of our social media outlets. And Ms. Jackson, if you want to say anything about it, so if I didn't leave anything out.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have been contacted by the American Idol officials. Of course, as Madam Mayor said, if Ms. Daniel, if Ms. Megan Daniel makes it to the top three, we will have a hometown visit that will be next week. So we're asking everyone, of course, to please vote for her, but of course, to also continue to watch our social media, our website, word of mouth, because we will be giving that information out as it relates to the hometown visit if she does make it, or when she does make it to the top three.
Yes. So that hometown visit is with Ryan Seacrest. All the American Idol people will come to your community. So hopefully, she'll make it to the top three. All right. If not, then we'll move, no other business. We'll move on to staff reports. We do have a presentation by Kevin Donaldson of Donaldson Architects to discuss the proposed police department shop expansion project. Councilwoman Davis, I apologize. I took your committee.
Madam Mayor, the schedule coming out in about 30 minutes.
Okay, okay, okay. So you said hurry up. Here we go.
Good evening, Megan.
Good evening.
Council, I appreciate your time. Tom and Demmon, 2083 Fairbairn Road. This is reference to shop expansion we talked about a couple of, three years ago. This is part of the fleet study we done back in 2018. I believe this is probably the last major project that was in that fleet study. Just funding time, COVID, I mean, hate to throw stuff back on COVID, but that's just, you know, it did play a major part in this. During that time, we did contract with Donaldson Architects and Kevin Donaldson here to design this project. The plans have been completed. There's a rendering that's, that's been done with the proposed shop expansion. It's basically ready for bid now. It's your pleasure if y'all decide to do that. Mr. Donaldson's here tonight to just briefly explain the design and the building, and answer any questions you may have. So, Mr. Donaldson.
Thank you, Officer Demming.
Thank you for your time.
Good evening.
My name's Kevin Donaldson. I'm with Donaldson Architects, 168 North Johnston Street, Dallas, Georgia.
Yes, sir.
The scope of the project is basically to add about 2,000 additional square feet of enclosed shop, and then add approximately 2,000 square feet of open pavilion. The staff indicated that there's needs for repairing the vehicles, a different type of vehicle now, so the space is higher, the space is wider. And then also the enclosed pavilion for some, some equipment storage is needed right now. The equipment's out in the, in the weather. So I believe you have a rendering there. We're going to attempt to match materials as best as we can. The overall facility, the enclosed facility is about doubling in size, and then add about a 2,000 square foot pavilion, open pavilion.
Yes, sir. For council's reference, there are pages 12 through about 30 of renderings and elevations and all of that.
I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions, council? This is Mayor Protem.
The Public Safety Building is done in the Corinthian Order, and you're not using Corinthian, so a little disappointed, but guess we'll have to get by.
He's taken off his architect hat, but he can't help it. It's in his blood. Yes, sir. Any other comments from council members? For Mr. Donaldson. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Megan. Officer Demming will take action on Monday. I will move on then to staff report to discuss a proposed downtown district. And this is going to tie right into what was brought up before from the agenda item that was going to be tabled, that we will not take action on from Councilmember Davis's committee. Yes, ma'am. Our city Assistant City Manager, Ms. Jackson?
Yes, ma'am. And Madam Mayor, I'm going to back up and, to back to item A. If you all don't mind, I just want to gain consensus with the mayor and council, just to ensure you all are okay with us going out to a formal bid process for the item that they discussed. So we'll issue a RFP, and then we'll bring it back before council once we receive those items back.
I see heads nodding. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Moving on to the staff report, I'll go ahead and toss it over to our staff attorney, Miranda Jordan. She'll discuss the proposed downtown district.
Good evening once again, Madam Mayor and council.
Good evening.
So this item relates back to the distance requirements item that brought before council during the April 27th, May 1st round of meetings. And there was some confusion in that item because of some of the language that referenced the Central Business District. There is a zoning classification called the Central Business District, but the downtown area as a whole really hasn't been identified and, and labeled officially. And the downtown area as a whole is a good reference point for the intent of the actual amendment to 10-18 of the Alcohol Ordinance Regarding Distance Requirements. The intent that, that my understanding of the intent was that the area being downtown, all the way from Rose Avenue to Hamilton Street, down to about, just below Spring Street. And there's a map on the agenda item on page three, and it's, it's a little blurry because I had, just to blow it up a little bit. But that shows the greater downtown area. It also includes some area in Ward One that just behind the Strickland Street properties, right in the center of town. So right across from where MacCarley Street crosses the railroad tracks, that part of the area is considered part of the downtown area, which this particular resolution would call the downtown district, just to simplify things.
Ward Three.
Ward Three, I'm sorry. I said Ward Two. And it encompasses a good amount of the downtown area in the Ward Two area as well.
Yes, so Ward Two and Ward Three. So it is, for simplification, we are typically understanding of Central Business District, the downtown development area, or downtown historic district, and entertainment district, and tax allocation district. So this would really delineate all of that and put a highlight on top of the area to say that this is the downtown district for all of those purposes that I just named, development, entertainment, all of that.
Well, we want to make sure and differentiate entertainment district. The entertainment district specifically applies to open container days.
Right.
So this actually is a bit larger than the entertainment district, which is why we are referencing just downtown in general versus... And, and also I want to differentiate because the tax allocation district is also something that has been separately differentiated for the purposes of the, of properties within that district being eligible for...
Resources.
Correct. So it's, it's a different designation.
Right. I understand that. I was just saying...
But yeah, they all kind of stack on top of each other. Some of the boundaries are very similar. Some of them are different.
Okay. All right, I'll open the floor if I see, and the ward member, Councilmember Miller, in.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Sorry, your map's a little blurry here. Does this encompass all of the town green? Because it's kind of jagged.
It does. The area all the way at the left side of the map, there's just a little part that sticks out. And that, that little part that sticks out would be Hudson's. The part that's not included just south of there is the cemetery.
Okay.
Yes.
Club Drive.
The town green parcel would be just inside the red line on the, the left side. That's that green parcel. Yeah, that's, that's just the green.
At worst, church and Club Drive in that area. All right, Mr. Mayor Protem?
So my, my understanding of this, if it's not, if it's correct, is that this designation acts almost like a overlay district as far as zoning goes, correct? So that it gives applicants a chance to present a project through the development process, isn't it?
So this does not, this resolution is not asking council to develop a new zoning classification or an overlay district. It's just defining space under which the amendment to Section 10-18 of the Alcohol Ordinance is a reference point. Instead of referencing the Central Business District as an area that is exempt, because Central Business District is a zoning classification. So it's just wrong terminology was being used.
This is geographic classification.
This is a geographic classification only. Correct.
So it has nothing to do with zoning?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Any other questions? Yes, Dr. Burdanley?
I have a question. The extension, like for Mill Village Park, Grady Street, that is more residential. It looks like the, the map, I mean, I'd see it's business, but the way the map is drawn, that's more residential in the area. Am I missing that?
No, that's correct. And there's actually a lot of the properties that are shown in kind of a pale yellow on the map at the more southern end of the red outlined area. Those are also residential as well. What that means is that the 300 yard, or 300 feet, 600 feet distance requirements would be exempt in the, in the red zone. But a property, say you've got these residential properties and they're zoned R2, somebody's not going to be able to go onto an R2 property and put in a restaurant, a brewery, a taproom, anything like that, just because that's a residential zoning classification. So the, I don't want to confuse where something could go with the outline being... All it means is that there's going to be distance requirement exemption in there. So if you've got a property, this little property in, well, I'll go with the town green property. The town green property, somebody wants to come in and, and construct a brewery on that mixed-use park. They would be able to do so now because we have designated this area, it outlined in red, as being exempt from distance requirements because right down the street from there is a church.
Right, it's a, a public park and a church. In fact, there are two churches, I think, in the area. It just seems confusing.
It is confusing, and I, we don't really have understanding. Maybe we'll get more clarity. But I think would count, and not to say what you're trying to say, Councilmember Burdanley, Dr. Burdanley, but that East Strickland Street and that whole area is a lot of residential. And we do understand that there are some on Strickland Street, some businesses, barber shop, painting, Mitchell Appliance, all of that. But those other homes, are we saying because they're zoned residential, they will not be subject to have someone come in and put a brew pub? But they can apply. And zoning and the district are two, zoning and the downtown district are two separate things.
They would have to rezone the property, and that would come before council if they were to want to... If they were to want to put something on a residential lot, they would have to go through the rezoning process before they would be allowed to do that.
Okay. But you're saying some of those homes in that area, though, it's a mixed neighborhood. So there are neighborhood-friendly businesses, and if this wanted to spur some more neighborhood-friendly businesses or a brew pub, they would have the availability to do that.
Within, they would be exempt from distance requirements within this red boundary.
You can't do anything and have it the proper zone. If they got something rezoned, residential or commercial, they wouldn't be subject to the distance requirements. If they're pouring liquor by the drink, the fact that you're designating this area doesn't rezone anything. liquor by the drain, the fact that you're designating this area doesn't rezone anything.
Okay, okay. All right. Does that help? No?
We'll talk about it later.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments? So we're not voting on this on Monday, are we?
No, ma'am. And just for clarity, if council wishes to have a downtown district, this does not affect anything as relates to brew pubs, alcohol, or anything. This is just establishing a larger district to ensure that we can have it a variety of mixed-use items, including housing, businesses in this downtown proposed area. So anything relates to distance requirements, alcohol, brew pubs, any of that, has nothing to do with the downtown district. And then later on, after council establishes, that's when staff will go do research, and they'll have, will strengthen the definitions as well as any type of distance requirements and whatnot. But this has nothing to do with alcohol or anything. This is just supporting a larger variety in mixed use in the downtown area.
Thanks for clarifying that, Ms. Jackson. I think just from going from where we were two weeks ago to where we are now, it just looks totally like day and night. So thank you for being specific.
Okay, any other comments from council members? You'd like to want to say something, Councilman Watts? Okay.
Ms. Ms. Jackson cleared that, because I was going to say I spoke with Ms. Hampton today, and the understanding I had was exactly what she said, that this doesn't have anything to do with alcohol distances or anything. This is just to clarify an area of downtown.
Yes, sir. Any other comments from council members? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Jackson?
Just one more thing. Would mayor and council like to place this or place an item on the council agenda on Monday night to vote on the downtown district? Or would you all like to push it to another round of meetings?
We will, we'll email you.
Yes, ma'am, if you all email myself as Assistant City Manager.
Because I hear mixed emotion, mixed, yes. We'll email you, and then that'll be the determination on Monday. Yes, ma'am.
I think I understand what you're explaining to us. And if I understand correctly, then I'm ready to move forward with it.
Agreed.
So I'm not going to email you.
Okay.
I see a few yeses. And then the other individuals that I haven't heard, I'll just await emails from you all.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Any other comments, questions, or concerns about this item? All right, not having any other, then we are finished with our staff reports, and we'll go to updates from our city staff, our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson. Thank you, sir. Our staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Our police department, Officer Demming.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And our city manager's department, Ms. Jackson.
No business tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, we've come into the area for comments from citizens and delegates. If you sustain the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to talk to us about any business that has germane to the city of Douglasville. Okay, we don't have any. If we don't have any other business to come before us this evening, this meeting is adjourned.